Hello, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. Will you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the regime of justice for all.
Oh, dear. I'm sorry. Did I? What happened? No. Pastor Parnell, would you mind leading us in prayer?
Shall we pray together? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you again for that wonderful privilege we have to call you God and Father. We ask now for wisdom. Lord, as we take care of the city's business, I pray you'll give us insight, and we pray, Father, that you will be glorified. We pray for our city. We pray for our citizens. Lord, we pray for our administration, staff, and all of our residents of the city of Portage, our police officers, our firefighters, and their families as well. Bless them, protect them, watch over them. Again, Father, bless this meeting tonight. Give us guidance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Could we do the roll call?
Absolutely. Councilman Alvarez.
Here.
Councilwoman Weinbach.
Here.
Councilwoman Hurst.
Here.
Councilwoman Parnell.
Here.
Councilwoman Vasquez.
Here.
Councilwoman Ambler.
Here.
Councilman Zilly.
Here.
And then, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes? Are there any corrections, or is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for May 6th and May 12th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I don't vote. So, I'm gonna go past my communications and correspondence. I'll save that for the end, just as needed. We'll go ahead into our different swearing-in ceremonies. We have the fire department. We have three new hires being sworn in. We'll start with the fire department. And then, we are swearing in two police officers as well. But Chief Crayle, if you don't mind coming up?
First, I'd like to call up... Sorry. Justin, come on up.
If you could raise your hand. Right, yeah. And when I say state your name, you'll say your name. And then, when I say swear or affirm, you can pick swear or affirm. I do this every time. Sometimes people will say, oh, but you don't have to. It'll certainly be okay. I state your name.
I, Justin Morgan.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Indiana.
And the laws of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a member of the City of Portage Fire Department.
As a member of the City of Portage Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Levi?
Please repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support the Constitution. And the laws of the United States of America. The Constitution. And the laws of the state of Indiana. And that I will faithfully. And impartially. Execute the duties. Of my office. As a member of the City of Portage Fire Department. To the best of my ability. And according to the law. So help me God. Congratulations. Congratulations again. Thank you so much. And then, Andrew. Oh, I've heard this name before.
Once, once or twice. Yes. So now, I'd like to call up Andrew. Like it to be known that Andrew is a fourth-generation firefighter. His dad is on the fire department on his way up. His grandpa's in the front row. That is, he's been in the fire service for over fifty years. This is a proud moment for the Hyman family, for sure.
I state your name.
I, Andrew Hines.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Indiana.
And the laws of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully. And impartially. Execute the duties. Of my office. As a member of the City of Portage Fire Department. To the best of my ability. And according to the law. So help me God. Congratulations. There's no particular order, as far as, you know. Thank you so much.
So, he's not being sworn in, but with promotions, they mean a big deal in the police and fire service. So, we did recently have a retirement with Mark Lewis. With Mark Lewis's retirement, Mike Eckert was promoted to the rank of engineer. His wife is going to pin his... Oh, his son is going to pin his badge on him. Glad to hear this. I told him to stay on.
If we could have our chief come up?
Hide behind the screen.
So I think we got another... Yep. It says here Theodore Yzilak? We'll start with Theodore?
Yeah, we'll start with Jonathan Kraus.
All right. We'll have Mr. Kraus come up. Hi. You guys have a... If you could raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Kraus.
Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support the Constitution. And the laws of the United States of America. The Constitution. And the laws of the state of Indiana. And that I will faithfully. And impartially. Execute the duties. Of my office. As a member of the City of Portage Police Department. To the best of my ability. And according to the law. So help me God. Congratulations.
I didn't realize that you guys have a special.
I'm sure it's how young you'd be so disappointed after all.
All right. Now you need to look at, yeah. All right. Now we'll bring up tennis play.
If you could raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Edith Hola.
Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support the Constitution. And the laws of the United States of America. Constitution. And the laws of the state of Indiana. And I will faithfully. And impartially. Execute the duties. Of my office. As a member of the City of Portage Police Department. To the best of my ability. And according to the law. So help me God. Congratulations. Yes. You'll get one copy. That's true of everyone. You'll get your own copy of yours, and then there's one for the city. I don't believe there's any big risk of them ever getting life lost in some tomorrow.
All right, same thing. Even longer offer than they have.
Thank you.
While the mayor's grabbing his seat, I always tell the families of the officers, I'm sure it goes with the firefighters too, now's your chance to escape and go celebrate if you don't want to listen to the very exciting information that's gonna be shared at this council meeting tonight. You can catch it on YouTube or Facebook if you are afraid of missing something. Are you offended that everybody's leaving? I'm sure they're gonna watch it later. They're gonna watch it later.
With everybody who, it looks like everybody who was here for just the swearing-in has stepped out, what I would just say, if anybody wants to sit a little closer, now is your opportunity to come closer. If you're like me and you gravitate towards the back, that's okay as well, but just, I know some people like a front-row seat. Not seeing any further shuffle. Yeah, I forgot to mention that part. I'm really excited to see the reptile shirt here, too. We can move to the clerk treasurer's report.
Okay, it's been a very, very busy two weeks in my office. The state board of accounts have been in there, and I have to schedule entrance conference with the mayor and Victoria, so I need to know your availability for next week. So, I think I got Victoria's, and Victoria said that she's available Wednesday or Thursday after 3:00.
That is correct.
Wednesday definitely, I think, works for me, so I'll double-check that, but I'll confirm after this meeting. I'll pull my schedule out.
Thank you. I also wanted to let everybody know that we, myself and the mayor, have been having department head meetings, financial department head meetings, and they have been going very well. I think all the departments are under a clear understanding of what their budgets are and their restraints for their budgets. Mayor, if you want to chime in on the financial meetings we've been having, Austin?
I think it's been great. Sorry, I was pulling the schedule up. You're talking about the financial meetings?
Yes.
Oh, it's been, I think, a positive step in the right direction for us. I think that there's been kind of a long history of, in my opinion, not enough communication between our offices. I don't mean you and me. I mean our offices, in figuring out how to be able to take the city's financial situation and check it week by week with the department heads so that everybody is seeing the big picture, you know? There's something to be said about the story of the children who can't see, or maybe it's nighttime and they find an elephant and they all grab a piece of it, make an idea of what they think an elephant looks like, but it's when you turn the light on, you see the whole thing, and I think that that's what's happened in these meetings gradually. I kind of told the department heads, it's like, when I was young, I once did five push-ups a day for a week, just because I was nervous about starting at 10:00. I think we kind of went at that pace, I think, but it was the pace we needed, I think, to be able to really get some good communication going, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a very good step in the direction for the city, for the financial end of it, and we are having a lot of good dialogue in these meetings. The other thing I wanted to touch on was that we are currently, my staff is very busy also, still updating ordinances, and Scott McClure, our attorney, can attest to that. He has approved almost every ordinance, the ordinance update that we have sent him with a few minor corrections, and I appreciate you, Scott, for doing that. And I think almost all of the ordinances that we've updated so far are on the agenda for tonight, so... I'm gonna keep it short and sweet, since we have a lot on the agenda, and I appreciate the ordinance committee for hearing the ordinances that were presented to them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, under unfinished business, that gets us to ordinance 2522. Scott or the chief, or chief, did you want to come up?
I think, I think Attorney Elwood and the chief are still working on this. I don't think they've gotten this anything club to the point that it's ready for city council consideration. I know we were attempting to get this done before the 4th, but it got sent back for reasons to get through, so my understanding is, is that Attorney Elwood and the chief still have some things to get through on it at this point.
I'll make a motion to table 2522.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chief, I imagine you were about to say similar things. Got it. Gets us to new business, SB 1, Louis Dreyfus Company Personal Property and Real Property Resolution Number 1, I'm sorry, Number 2509, ERA Tax Abatement, Real Property, and then Resolution 25-10, ERA Tax Abatement, Personal Property. Mr. McClure, are these separate procedurally?
I, I just got these resolutions. They are two separate ones. I just...
That's what I was looking to make sure, yeah. No problem. Thank you. So, with Resolution 2509ERA, Councilman Zilly, would you mind reading that?
Sure. Resolution Number 25, 2025-09, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Portage, Porter County, Indiana, Approving an Economic Revitalization Area Assess Valuation Deduction Tax Abatement for...
approving an economic revitalization area assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for qualified tangible real property improvements for Louis Dreyfus Company Burns Harbor LLC pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1. Let the record reflect, this has been read in its entirety. Motion to adopt.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, discussion? Oh, we certainly can. Sorry. I can just assume discussion for each thing, I apologize. Discussion.
I think we want to hear from them.
Come on up.
So thank you for considering the abatement here. We're very excited with this opportunity at the Port of Burns Harbor, Ports of Indiana. We think there's a great opportunity here. The elevator has sat idle for a couple of years now, so there is considerable risk in us restarting it. We have our formal approval internally next week, next week, to go forward with the lease. Our plans are really to hire 13 people here, so it's not a huge amount of new employment, although it is new to the area. At competitive wages, skilled positions, so very, very competitive there. We're planning on putting, we have $18 million into the facility to restart it, as well as improve what's already there. The big benefit to the area is going to be really around the local farming community, giving them another outlet, major buyer of their products that they grow, their crops. And I mean, we really hope, the more, the more that we can buy, the better the elevator's doing. So we think upwards of $70 million a year that we'll be purchasing in local farmers' crops. Louis Dreyfus, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Louis Dreyfus Company. We are a European company by our founding, but we have a large presence in U.S. as well. Not far away in Claypool, Indiana, we have a large soybean crush and biodiesel facility that employs over 100 people there. So we are a big employer in the state of Indiana. This facility will also source soybeans for that plant, is, that is our plan right now. But, yeah, I think, I think this, the opportunity is great, but there is considerable risk in the unknown restarting facility. That's been idle for a couple of years. So happy to answer any other questions you guys might have.
How many employees will you be having?
So onsite, we're going to have around 13. Mix of skilled, you know, operational folks, as well as people who will be on site to interact with farmers as they come in and purchase the grain directly, face to face.
I guess I would just add that operations in the port are extremely important for us as a port city. And I would just say that ultimately, a successful port is a successful portage. Although the word portage and port are not exactly the same, we're very linked. It's called the Port of Burns Harbor, but actually, the town of Burns Harbor is named after the port in Portage. Just fun fact.
And just for clarification, this first ordinance that we're, the council's reviewing is just dealing with the real property tax abatement request.
So I believe we already have a motion and a second. We're at discussion. Is it appropriate for me to call roll unless there's other discussion? Right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And then any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations. That gets us to Resolution 2510 ERA Tax Abatement Personal Property. Councilman Alvarez, would you mind reading that one?
Resolution 25-10, a resolution of the common council of the city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana, approving an economic revitalization area assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for qualified tangible, depreciable personal property for Louis Dreyfus Burns Harbor LLC pursuant to Indiana Code 6 point, excuse me, 6-1.1-12.1. Let the record show that the proposed resolution has been read in its entirety.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And within the discussion, I know you're just up here, but was there anything else you wanted to say?
No, I don't think there's any more. I think we're excited about the opportunity and appreciate you guys working with us on this to help get it over the finish line.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or discussion? Not hearing. I will call, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. That gets us to CF1 MSI Express. Councilwoman Widenbach, would you be willing to read that one for us? I'm sorry, does that actually have to be read, or is that more just a renewal? I apologize.
So what we're looking at is the compliance with statement of benefits for personal property for MSI Express. This is them showing their estimated and then what the council had in front of it when they were estimating what they were going to be doing to get the tax abatement and then the actual, to make sure they're in compliance with what they said they were going to be able to complete.
I gotcha. So would it be suffice just for a council person to make a motion on it? And then?
It would be.
I'll make a motion to accept the CF1 for MSI Express HP AS1 LLC and 1546, 467th Street LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So I think just to clarify, they've already received this, this is the review that they're compliant.
That's exactly. Whether it's jobs or investment or personal property investment, this is to make sure they followed up with their end of the bargain and this is the reporting that gets done yearly to the council for your approval.
Thank you. Unless there's any discussion, I will call all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Gets us to another CF1 HP ASI LLC. Oh, gotcha. I, I don't know what happened today. I think it was swearing all the people in, keeping up with the repeating it. Where's the heat? Well, that gets us then to introduction of ordinances. We have ordinance 25-27, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 1, entitled Finance Generally. Now I'll call on Councilwoman Widenbach to read this for us.
Ordinance Number 25-27, an ordinance of the city of Portage, Indiana, amending Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 1, entitled Finance Generally of the municipal code City of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Let the record show it's been read in its entirety.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend. I would say, is there any discussion on that? Or Liz, would you like to talk about what this is?
So what this, this one is, is it's a ordinance to update our policies that we are currently adhering to in our office and for the city.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Didn't hear any opposed? So the suspension passes. Now do we have a motion on the ordinance?
I actually have a motion to amend. I think Section C of the ordinance should be the city, instead of shall, collect a sum equal to the amount of the charge from the person, it should be the city may collect. The state law says that we may collect a fee, we don't have to. I think our ordinance should say may, that the city should have the choice.
I would agree that.
In the future, to not collect it if we choose to do so, and the ordinance reading shall would lock us into have to doing it and would require a change in the future.
I would agree.
I would make a motion to amend subsection C to be the city may collect a sum equal to the amount of the charge from the person or entity that uses the financial instrument.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay. And then that gets us to the ordinance as amended, unless there's other amendments or discussions.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second. Speak now or hold your peace, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Gets us to 2528, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 1.5, entitled Finance Credit Cards for City Purchases. I will now call on Councilwoman Ambler, if you could read that for us. I believe you can read the title and then you can say, let the record reflect.
Ordinance 25-28, an ordinance of the city of Portage, Indiana, amending ordinance 15-23, an ordinance establishing procedures for the use of city credit cards, city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Let the record reflect that it has been read in its entirety.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and a second. Maybe if we could just get comment real quick on which this one is?
What this is, is we're just, we, all the department heads receive a credit card and all we're doing is asking the department heads to be fiscally responsible with their credit card and if they loan it out to someone to make a log that it's been loaned out for that purchase.
All right. We have a motion and a second to suspend. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Suspension passes?
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second. I'm not sure who called it the second, though. Okay. Any discussion? Not hearing discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I think we're good. That gets us to ordinance 2529, establishing a sanitary department donation fund. I will ask Councilwoman Vasquez, if you could read that for us?
Absolutely. Ordinance 25-29, an ordinance of the city of Portage, Indiana, establishing a donation fund for the Portage Sanitary Department, city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Let the record reflect, the ordinance has been read in its entirety.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend and a second. I think this one is a little bit more explanatory, but Liz, do you want to just state?
Okay. Currently, our training, training for the sanitary department is basically out of town, so I'll have Tracy come in and speak about this one.
Thank you, Tracy. And thank you, Liz.
Good evening. So what this is, is we're establishing a fund because we're doing quite a few trainings and conferences type things at our importage. We're putting it out for Alliance to have their trainings here for wastewater collection. We're doing a microscopy class with Tony Gwynf in October that IWEA is doing, but we are taking sponsors and getting donations for the lunches and the breakfast that is contributing, so we don't have to contribute taxpayers' money to that. So we want a fund so that we can get the money out of the fund. It's a way to keep it track.
And we had to create a fund, the council has to approve the fund when we create it.
So we have a motion and a second to suspend, I believe. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Believe that passed. That gets us to the ordinance itself. Everyone calm down. Let, let's try that one more time. Perfect. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I think we're good. I know, it's what we get for having this on a nice day, that was well said. All right, that gets us to ordinance 2530, establishing a park donation fund for funds received from the Portage Township Trustee. I could speak just a little on that, just, we've got, oh. I know, oh, you're right, we should still read it first. All right. Councilman Parnell, would you mind reading that one for us?
Ordinance Number 25-30, an ordinance of the city of Portage, Indiana, establishing a donation fund for the city of Portage Parks Department, city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Let the record reflect that the ordinance has been read in its entirety.
Motion to suspend.
We have a motion to suspend and a second. I will just state, you'll remember this great donation that happened last time that we had a meeting. This is the mechanism to be able to accept that donation. All in favor, please. Yes.
My pleasure.
So now we have a motion to suspend in a confirmed second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And the reason I'm asking is because it does require unanimous vote in order to suspend, so I do need to check. All right.
I would just like to thank, once again, thanking the township trustee for doing what they did, that's awesome.
It's pretty awesome indeed. All right. So do we have a, any discussion or a motion on the ordinance itself?
Motion to adopt.
So this is 50,000 for improved facilities of the BMX facility at Imagination Glen and Wolf Park, a picnic shelter at Wolf Park.
Correct.
Any other discussion questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll explain it a little bit more. So the reason why we had to create a fund for this was because we got a donation of $50,000 from the Portage Township Trustee, and he wanted it to be used for a specific purpose. So that's why we had to create a special fund just for that.
Shoot, now I've lost track. This has already been motioned and seconded. Okay, great. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We're good. All right, this gets us to ordinance 3531, amending salary ordinance 2435 v. 17. I'm going to ask if Councilwoman Geishurst, could you read the, the one for us? Yeah, you just want to read the beginning part, then you can say, I think, let it reflect or let the record reflect. Oh, we don't? No. I apologize. We'll pass it down to you because I'm determined to make this meeting last a little bit long. Could have just had Colin read it, but it just wouldn't seem, you know.
Salary ordinance budget year 2025, ordinance 2531. An ordinance establishing the amount of salaries and compensation to be paid to all appointed employees and officers of the city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana for the year 2025, be it and hereby is ordained by the common council of the city of Portage, Indiana, as follows. The salary schedule is presented, Section 1, that from the first pay date of January 2025 through the last pay date in December 2025, effective date noted on attachment, the pay schedule for the employees and officer of the city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana, as followed. And it affects the code enforcer officer, enforcement officer.
Just let the record reflect that this has been.
Let the record reflect that this has been read in its entirety.
So this is a first reading. If you guys want to take some time on this, you certainly can. We've had, I just explained what's going on and what's been going on, and I think Liz would agree on this if I explain it and feel free to correct if need be. The history of Portage, the title or positions of code enforcement officer, depending on kind of the year, not so much the budget, but the year perceived needs of the city, has moved around between different departments, primarily between the building department and the police department. What's happened over time is we have, within the city itself, two code enforcement officers. One is considered, or that would be previously, if this has changed, a, it's based on the title of lead or like supervising code enforcement officer, even though one does not supervise the other, and they are in different departments with different defined responsibilities. I believe in the Dropbox, you guys were given a email that was sent or a copy of an email from Lynn Greilich, as well as the job descriptions involved. The goal here is, I believe, to define the job descriptions, match the pay equitably, or at least correctly, you know, to what the job descriptions are and those actual positions. It's not a state, well, to put it really simply, it's something that I believe is necessary to do. It was a problem necessary to solve, and this is our proposal. But I understand if you guys have questions or if you'd like some time to dig a little more.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion to suspend and a second. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that gets us to the ordinance itself.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion to adopt and a second. Um, any discussion? Otherwise, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That gets us to item F, Ordinance twenty-five thirty-two, amending schedule of fees established under Chapter fourteen Buildings and Building Regulations. Let's see. Oh, we're back to, um, Colin, but I believe this is a first or second reading? This is the first? Okay. Colin, if you could go ahead and read this?
Uh, Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-two, an ordinance amending the schedule of fees established under Chapter fourteen Buildings and Building Regulations, section fourteen dash eighty-four for the City of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Let the record reflect this has been read in its entirety.
So, what you're seeing here are the proposed fees. Uh, Mr. Cherry, did you want to come up for this part?
Just to explain, and as noted, we have been trying pretty diligently to catch the city up in terms of appropriate costs, in particular, making sure that, quite frankly, developments are paying for themselves. The city is getting compensated adequately. I know that Tom spoke in, uh, either the last meeting or the one before about the needs on the engineering side. Tracy's talked about the needs that we, you know, need for the sanitary, that we, council took action on. Um, Tom's been working on that here.
So, I worked with staff. We did a, a study, a comparison study within, uh, Porter County and some Lake County municipalities, and we also did a, a study of our cost within the department. So, we've, uh, uh, changed the fee schedule, uh, increased the fees. They have not been increased in many years, so, um, so this wasn't just an arbitrary fee. We, we actually studied, um, surrounding areas, and we're up to par with everybody else. So, um, I would, uh, staff recommends adopting, but I would appreciate it, so...
Tom, when was the last time we had increased any of these? Do you, do you know?
I knew you were, somebody was going to ask me this. I, I thought it was fifteen. Does that sound right?
I, I think it was before my time, so that was...
It was definitely before your time. I think it was fourteen or fifteen?
I mean, these should be looked at every, at very least, every couple of years, so...
If anything, we should probably keep an eye out if surrounding municipalities are going up. This is not the sort of thing where we necessarily benefit from being down. You know, this is something where, when people are building subdivisions, building homes and things in the city, we want to make sure that our departments are able to properly handle that.
I just have a question for clarification. Um, the acronym ILP, what does that stand for?
Uh, that's an improvement, um, location permit.
Thank you.
Does this include things like, you know, you're putting in a pool, or you're putting up a deck, that kind of stuff for residents?
It does, yes.
Some municipalities straight up, like, itemize those things. In Portage, they're all covered under a particular category. It can, oh, no problem, yeah.
It's a long list.
We have not, as noted, it's been certainly more than ten years since the city has updated this.
And the, the residential, um, fees did not go up drastically. We're, we're not looking to, we're not a profit center. We're, we're just trying to, I mean, for our people. Yeah.
It looks like the, the highest fee is a new commercial permit, basically.
That is correct.
Uh, eight hundred dollars and then thirty-two cents a square foot.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll make a motion to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? We, uh...
I, point of order.
Oh, no.
Colin, I don't believe we can suspend because we're dealing with fees.
Oh, shoot. Well, I like the spirit and the energy.
I appreciate that, too, so...
Just the first reading, then. But I think we got a good sense of it, and I apologize, though, because I also forgot that we could not suspend, because I was, you know, anyway. Well, we'll be ready at the next meeting. All right. Are there any reports from the standing committees?
You. In regards to the Porter County Recycling and Waste Reduction, remind everybody that this Saturday is the Household Hazardous Waste and Secure Shredding, um, Saturday, June seventh, from nine to two at the Portage High School.
Nothing from the ordinance committee.
All right. With the city officials, I just wanted to see the chiefs. Uh, oh, sorry, I heard a noise. I thought somebody was, sorry. It's okay. You guys all right, or was there anything? Okay, okay. Petitions or monstruses and public input? If you'd like to come up and speak, you certainly can. We try to keep it within about two minutes. I'm not trying to be terribly timery. I like the sign.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Liz, Colin. Um, my name is Brian Gully. I'm with the Portage Park and Recreation Foundation. Uh, first wanted to thank everybody for, uh, our Brew Fest fundraiser a few weeks ago. Uh, was another success. I want to thank Councilman Alvarez for coming out and the mayor for coming out, and Gina for volunteering every year to help us pour. Um, it was a great success. Uh, this summer, we're doing a sign campaign, uh, for, we love our parks, and so we're hoping that residents will want to be park supporters and, uh, put these signs in the yard, hoping to see them all over the city. You can get them at the Parks Department. You can pay with cash or card there, and then we're also going to be at, uh, Market on the Square a few days selling signs. So, if you guys want to help support, uh, the Park Department, that's what we do. We're a five oh one three C charity that everything we do is to help the Park Department. Um, we've donated to help build Hannah's Hope. Um, we've donated some signs to some of the parks. Um, the roll downs at Open Air Pavilion were us. Um, so, so we've done things around town for probably the last thirty-plus years. So, if anybody wants a sign, um, I have a few here in my car. If anybody wants one tonight, otherwise you can pick them up at the Park Department, or we'll see you at Market on the Square.
How much are the signs?
Signs are twenty dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not hearing any? Um, any other matters for the council? And if not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.